Okay, this is a follow-up to Council's last discussion of the recommendations that came out of the Neighborhood Preservation Committee in regard to various aspects of the community, everything from fences to accessory structures to carports and pork shares, some other miscellaneous property issues. So, we're trying to continue to work our way through this to see what your temperature is for regulating some of these things differently.
Can I make a request? And I don't know if the slides are that way. I know that the NPC actually made some recommendations in my mind. I think they made some very limited recommendations that they had a huge portfolio that they came through. Are we going through the portfolio or are we just going through the one or two things that they recommended?
We're going through a couple of their recommendations as they relate to specific areas.
Could you please expand on that?
Well, I'd like to go back and look at some of that.
Not all of it, but I think parking needs to be looked at.
Well, let's look at what you've got first and then why it's a problem.
All right.
And before Eric and Patience started, you know, one of the big issues, especially on things like accessory buildings, is the enforcement capabilities that we have and quite frankly, the fact that if you drive around town and look in the backyards today, you're going to see everything under the sun as far as what's there today. And I don't really see that that's so far out of the bag. I don't see us really trying to deal with all of those unless y'all want us to try. If we try that, it's going to be a hard, hard thing to do. It's one of the most difficult things there is to enforce on a regular basis and to go backwards on folks that have existing structures, just FYI, it's going to be tough. And we'll get to that when we talk about accessory structures. But to a lesser extent, it's one of the issues with almost any of these requirements, fences or carports or add-ons, buildings, et cetera. So, with that kind of as an overriding caveat, go ahead, guys.
Okay, we're going to kind of split this up. Council, as Council would get more requested, what we can do is get, maybe get some of the low-bearing fruit and then we can go back and talk about some things you didn't want to talk about in depth.
Maybe it may be more sensible, Eric, if there's no time here to just flip the list and then we'll circle out another council item.
Okay. Patience is going to start out and we'll get through this.
All right. And as Todd mentioned, this is kind of a culmination of two different discussions that various members of Council see on previous occasions. The Neighborhood Preservation Committee recommendations were initially presented last year at retreat. And then the miscellaneous structures were presented at a council work session this year. So, we kind of merged those and several of them overlap in different areas. The reason for this was code violations, safety considerations, need for more specific design criteria in certain areas, and basically to just address any deterioration that was occurring in the area. As we said, the Neighborhood Preservation Committee-
Backing up, kind of get through those. We've come back. A lot of this had to do with citizen complaints, people calling you, people calling us about, "Why is this here? Why is that allowed there? What's going on over here?"
The Neighborhood Preservation Committee, they met 12 times within the frame of 2009 and 2010. And then they ended up with this final report, which was compiled in 2011. And if anybody needs a caveat, consider it. The presentation is organized into three main parts. First is with regard to parking concerns, garage enclosures, carports. Second is property maintenance and code issues, accessory structures and patio covers, fencing standards, and then some property management and rental inspection codes. Then incentive and revitalization strategies, basically things that we potentially do as the Neighborhood Preservation Committee recommended to address these issues. Just some definitions with regard to residential parking. And current requirements. Current requirements are one garage space and two spaces on concrete for every home. They're not permitted to be the front or the side or a setback. It has to be at least five feet from the property line. What I would consider probably the biggest loophole for current carports is that attached structures that are under 121 square feet don't require permits. Variances are heard by the zoning board adjustments. There aren't any exterior finish requirements outside of downtown. And the Old Town Design Review Committee would review structures that do require permits.
By the way, what we're talking about here is obviously on-site parking. One of the issues, as you brought up earlier, the committee looked at it, but opted not to make any recommendations on both sides of the off-site parking or, in other words, street parking, how much parking was on the street or the competition associated with numerous cars on the street itself. I think that's maybe we were headed-
Right. They thought they could address it better through the, through restricting garage enclosures and carports as opposed to parking on the street.
If you want to go in a different direction, there's something else that I need to discuss. Real quickly, what's the, the, what's the required distance from a mailbox in part of the street?
You just can't interfere with the mail carrier delivery. Typically, they'll, you know, seven to 10 feet either side of the mailbox.
We don't have a city ordinance?
We do. We do have a city ordinance that prohibits that.
It just says prohibit the-
Yeah.
So, if they have a semi going down through there, you can't park?
Pretty much.
If he knows that kind of getting cornered, you can argue.
But they don't care if you argue. It's not a delivery order. And it could be your neighbor parking in front of your mailbox on a public street.
FYI, what the committee really looked at as far as street parking was permit requirements for time of day, shifting from one side of the street to another, which typically see that usually, usually anything like that over here in this part of the country. I think because it has not been used much in this part of the country, they really didn't care much for either one of those. They really shied away from those types of regulatory impacts on the residents. One requirement that came in around about the same time that they didn't really look at, which is the Richardson ordinance that requires the parking, that you limit your parking only to the property in front of you. In other words, you can park on the street, but only between the property lines. You can't park in front of your neighbor's house or your three houses down or anything like that, except during certain times of the day. It's like a, I don't remember what was it, did it say seven to two or something like that?
Yes, a seven to two, but it was-
Seven to two or something like that.
Yeah. So, you could have a Super Bowl party or you could have a Bible study and you could have a bunch of cars, but that like overnight, they weren't going to be parking there. So, you wouldn't have 14 cars parked in front of your house overnight.
So, is that why they did not look at that type of requirement?
But on that, don't you have to register all your cars or get a tag or something?
There has to be some way of identifying these cars or where is this associated with what property?
And it's still a public street.
Public street. Public street. Man, Richardson's been using that for a couple of years. I don't know how they, what they use in the community.
Does the neighbor's student complain? They wanted to do something.
They'd probably force it on based on case fixes where they go out and they try to find out who's-
They're already doing all the Richardson Heights area.
So, what you would do is you'd go to the house that's complaining and you'd ask the owner, "Was this yours car? Your car?" And he'd say, "No." Boom, parking ticket. So, go ahead.
This is more of the Neighborhood Preservation Committee findings. Basically, that they found that conversion of garages was contributing to overcrowding of the streets and had led to several of the code violations. And it was particularly happening in smaller, older neighborhoods that maybe didn't have the garage space or that had space to accommodate these vehicles. And so, last May, Council actually approved an ordinance reinforcing the current code requirement that one garage space and two pave spaces were required per unit, basically eliminating garage enclosures without the question of variance or providing similar, another garage outside.
Did they make people tear out the garages that had been enclosed? So, how did they get the one garage enclosed?
Future changes.
Future, yes.
So, they weren't enforcing what was ours to do. That's true.
Everything existing was allowed to remain, but the future garage enclosures were-
It, code enforcement people go down the streets and catalog which were the original ones.
Yes. What, what, we did. We've done a fairly good inventory of what's out there. And what's out there is very confusing, as Mr. King had said earlier, that there was a time when I came to work in the mid-eighties that they didn't allow the garage conversions because the zoning ordinance said you couldn't do it. And then there was a period of time after that that the wind changed and they allowed the conversions because that was past the front door, man's castle, person's castle, so they allowed them. And then they, so there was a blend. I can remember two or three different changes in the policy of it, of how it was administered. So, and before the other one, they didn't regulate anything because the building codes weren't in existence prior to 71, so, in Louisville. So, there was a hodgepodge of different requirements and how they enforced it. So, that was, that led to a problem as well, is trying to figure out what's, whose is legal and who's isn't, who had a permit, who didn't have to get a permit. So, Gleed had his personnel go out and inventory the city of all garages from what we could tell from the public street side or the outside that had been converted, although there's a few, including a former employee. He kept his garage door, looked like a garage door, smelled like a garage door, but that was his billiard room inside. But he did it so he could convert it should he sell it when it was a nicer house, if somebody wanted a two-car garage and it was holding up the sale, but it could be converted back to a garage.
Okay. What's really funny is, as you said, the wind changed, the way somebody's councils changed.
I didn't say that.
I know you did. You were being very polite. The councils changed and they changed their, they changed the ordinance. So, now you can't do it. Now you can't do it. Now you can't do this. And what's really even closer to this is that we brought this up the last time, or the first time to council, what, five years ago, I guess, when we brought this up? It, it got shot down and there were several people out there, not many of them, but there were several people out there that were, "Oh, you can't take that away. It's our idea. That's what I've done." So, but they didn't want, they wanted us to do something about the parking. So, we put them on this committee. We put those three people in the committee. They came back and recommended, "Out all the garage enclosures. That's what we want to do."
Well, about the garage enclosures, are we giving any permits dollars without policy? If they wanted to do a garage enclosure, they have to come to the council or variance?
Yes. I believe there was some variance for garage enclosures.
Whoa!
Yes.
There was a child, that's what I was going to say. Because every time you make a hard-to-finish rule, then you change it because of the certain-
These are some photos of some carports, actually, that have, that exist around the city. And some of them are using materials which staff would recommend for a future carport.
That's a lot of work.
Probably just a few.
That's just a very, essentially, briefly saying, and like, you know, there's thousands of variations on that.
Are these in violation now?
Well, yeah.
Your grandmother.
I would say the RV one is probably acceptable just by looking at it, but definitely the one with the torn tarp on top and the concrete, of course, the-
But is it because it's torn?
And it's, it was about, it was a temporary-
We may have replaced, there's a new tarp on that, so we did make a replacement.
That's what I'm saying. It makes a difference. It's because it's torn or it's because it's a tarp.
And can he still have a portable tools? Use your mouse, use your mouse, go to that, along the rail track. Yeah, that one there. Is that one allowed now in the world? I mean, allowed now?
This is part of what we're, that's part of what, part of what presenting is that the typical portable ones that are sold at Cabello's or Northern Tool or whatever, that don't have the concrete footings, that aren't fixed to the ground, we don't have a tool to say that those are illegal because they're temporary quote. So, there's not, there's nothing out there. This is part of the, what we're presenting to you all of, of, do you want to regulate it or not? You know, see the temporary versus the permit. If they're permanent in the setbacks, then we have a tool to address that, unless they, which is only more of adjustment, we've got variances, which are, I remember those throughout the city. But the temporary ones, we don't have a tool to address at this time. But we're, we're presenting that now.
I'm with you now.
Yes, sir.
Also, a lot of these wouldn't have had to have gotten a permit because they're small. They're less than 121 square feet. So, under our current requirements, they wouldn't be allowed, which are proposals.
Should we rent the rest of them or should we?
No, I'm not saying specifically that one. I'm just saying some are small enough that they would require a permit.
You look at that one, there's actually two of them.
That's what I'm thinking. It's probably about that one that, those are there. We're just talking carports right now. We're not talking about sheds.
No, this is carport section.
So, the proposed standards for citywide carports and pork shares would be that anything that's less than or equal to 100 square feet doesn't require a permit, although it still needs to be located behind the building line from the front side back. The side and the rear setbacks need to be per the zoning district and five feet respectively. The maximum clearance height would be 10 feet. No requirements for roof pitch or materials. And you could use any listed material in the building. Once you get above 101 square feet, you do have to get a permit. You're still required to be located behind the front building line. Side and rear setbacks are the same. Maximum clearance height goes up to 14 feet. The roof pitch materials have to be consistent with or similar to the primary structure. And the materials are per the general development ordinance or they need to match what's on the primary structure.
Neither, neither one of these say anything about it being permanently attached or to the ground or how it's attached to the ground.
Because we would also, I guess, the temporary definition that they made here, oh, go ahead.
That comes in the department process. God, they have to get a permit and that's what we can look at and let them know how it's going to come.
Anything that's temporary would be considered, you could have it for 72 hours or less, but that would be it. These are just some diagrams showing how a carport with these, with these standards could be located on a lot. And then for Old Town, the standards are slightly different. Any size of carport or pork share would require a permit. And then the front setback would be per the zoning district, but not less than 10 feet because some of our zoning districts in Old Town don't have a front setback. The side and rear setbacks would be per the zoning district and five feet respectively. Maximum clearance height of 14 feet, roof pitch and materials matching the primary structure, and same for the exterior finish materials.
Why would a carport in Old Town, less than 100 square feet, be, be within? And the, and in the other part of town, it's not required?
Just a greater level of review in Old Town. It's more of a visible area and some-
All of Old Town?
Design Review District, right?
And more complaints, if you'd like.
Or the history of that problem, too.
These are some diagrams that show where a carport or pork share could be located in Old Town.
Hold on just a second though. I think you bring up a good point there. While there's more of a history complaints and it's more, if you start allowing, I mean, if you continue allowing all over, is it not going to be, as time goes on, be the same problem in the other part?
Potential.
See what I'm saying? We're saying it causes Old Town more, that's where it's happened more often. So, we're restricted more there than in our other parts as time goes on. Because other parts might not be the same.
But also, in addition to what you have chosen to do in Old Town, which is again, that heightened review process through the Old Town Development Review Committee, creating that special district that you want to create with that law, that you're not applying to the rest of the city.
It's still part of the permit.
Yes.
There's some realities here that have to be dealt with as well because to require the permit citywide requires an enforcement effort that is much broader and much more time-intensive, review-intensive. Council's review is planned, but Eric, if you'd like to keep up with what's out there to a much greater degree, it's a small structure and that, like I said, there are a lot of them out there.
Most of them, I got to the end of it.
Most, Gleed, jump in here. There's not a lot of 10 by 10 carports out there compared to the ones that we have complaints on or the ones that warrant truly a permit, inspection, structural integrity, or is it interfering with the neighbor's drainage or watershed? That, what we're looking at there is we're saying that there's, there's not many carports that are 10 by 10 or smaller. If they do have something smaller, it may not be a carport. It might be an overhang for something that's tied to the roof, more of a, maybe it's motorcycle or maybe it is a spot car. But we certainly can, can require the permit in the city if you want to. But we felt like it was less than 100, we would give that to the citizens. It wasn't big enough to be a significant problem. I think the issue with Old Town is they were looking at, since they already require permits for painting a house or there's already a different standard in the overlay district, that maybe a 10 by 10 would take away from somebody who just rebuilt their house and did a great job. Maybe, maybe that would. So, again, we can, we can change this if you like, but we felt like this was a higher level of scrutiny in the Old Town. We already had precedent there with the overlay district, so that's why we did that.
And that's, again, how we're defining Old Town is the design district in this case.
Yes, sir.
It's not everything of what somebody might define as old town.
Right.
It's a specific area.
It's in the design district. And the limits in the design district.
Can I understand that? I guess I was trying to be, we're being reactive now instead of proactive. Because we're having the problem, we're trying to do something to fix the problem. What I'm concerned about is if we don't do it all over, it's called saying it's to be more enforcement, but that's what got us in this now is we didn't, it's our fault for not doing as much enforcement problems we should have or we wouldn't have this problem.
And we can change that. That's Council prerogative and we can, we can change that.
We want to be proactive and not let it happen throughout the city.
Have any of y'all have a car that could fit in a 10 by 10 space?
I do.
A car?
Yeah.
You got two cars that fit in a 10 by 10?
Nothing out there would fit in 10 by 10.
There's not many of them that do everything like that.
Do I?
Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying so that right now, we don't have.
The garage in a house, the garage in a house is 20 by 10. That's what I'm getting at. You know, you're not going to protect much of a car in 10 by 10 shelter. And, and so, you know, the reason that it's put out there is so we don't have to deal with stuff that's under 100 square feet.
And I understand that, and they're saying right now, we don't have much of it, but I'm wondering-
No, there's, it's everywhere.
Well, they just said it's not much. A carport or a shed structure?
A shed structure is all over the place.
We're not, we're not there. This is tied to the house and the car, but we'll get to what you're talking about.
Yeah, now, okay, so we're going to do this on this side, but now should we?
We'll get to that.
Put the sheds to it.
See, the whole deal is, most of them are going to be screening devices or something else. But very few 10 by 10 car spots out there. Otherwise, garages would be 10 by 10.
There's very few, there's very, very few of these that are 10 by 10 carports or pork and shares. There's quite a few 10 by 10 shed structures, which is another category we'll get to, or accessory building or whatever. We're talking about true definition of carport, which we'll have that in the ordinance, we'll have that. But if you want to-
And I agree with you. There are very few. I just kind of want to keep it that there's very few.
The danger here is going to be the, what I call a really shoddy little panel. Tack on a four by 10 on it over the side yard or the side part of a building and then you park, try to hit something under there. And it's less than 100 square feet and this looks bad, but the-
And that's going to be what you do about it.
Yeah, if you don't permit it. The permit requirement, you can say it's not permit. Go after it.
It's good to talk about. What are you talking about in Old Town?
Everywhere. Are you going to go after it on the other side of town and get that required permit? Well, I'm saying you could require a permit.
But we didn't pick on Old Town. We did this in the overlay district. That's all that was done. It wasn't go, "Everybody in Old Town, y'all are going to get screwed on here." This was done intentionally and quite often at the neighborhood's request. They wanted to stop some of the stuff that's going on. And I don't know what percentage of Old Town Design District is commercial. I don't know what percentage it is, but it is in all houses.
And I agree with you 100%. We did it on the citizen's request and then likewise, I don't, I guess one thing, if we can go ahead and put it throughout, that we maybe don't have it happening in the other places later on, years from now, so that their quest, requesting this to do.
Y'all still got to remember, Old Town, a lot of these houses, they don't have a carport or a garage. And quite often, they got a gravel area on the side of the house to park their car. Okay, this is difficult. Go ahead.
Okay, so now we've already discussed enforcement implementation a little bit, but there were several options that, that we had kind of mulled over. The first one would be to conduct an inventory, allow existing structures to remain if they're in acceptable condition. Maybe they're not a safety hazard, they're not, they're not dilapidated. And that would just require all new structures to comply with the standard, the new standards. The second would be to basically amortize the carports by selecting a future date in which they all, by which they all must meet all the requirements. And then the third would just be prohibit all carports that don't meet the setback building line requirements.
Well, option two, you're talking about the ones that people got a permit in. We're talking about taking, I mean, that's all that is.
And we're all-
Well, what'd you, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
If there, if there's an option two, if they have a city permit, that's not what we're talking about. If they have a city permit and they, they have a city permit and they met with permits at the time, then they'd be legal unless they fell down or they dilapidate, it could be repaired.
But that's another issue that I'm dealing with.
I think these were the ones which all, I think, shouldn't say all, but the ones that could not be determined. That, I think that was what that option was, which is really not where we're leaning, but-
I don't, I don't be against anything out there that says all, because the city didn't require permits in some of these-
Which is really a forward option, which is grandfather. Everything that's out there.
Right. Well, that's okay. It's all come down. When it wasn't a permit required.
But you're going to have the same enforcement issue when we talk about sheds. The same exact issue. What do you grandfather, what do you allow? And it's worse for sheds.
But if I put something in and I go to the city and I say, "I want a permit for my this," and they go, "Well, you don't have to have one to do that."
Right.
And I spend my money and I maintain it all these years and then I, I'm told, "I've got to tear it down because I didn't get a permit."
I agree with that.
That's the answer.
And I agree with that. But if you look at option one, hey, guess it's an area that, I can say one that he won't mind. He won't mind saying, Bill Barton, his mother lived there for how many years? He and his dad lived there for-
Fifty years.
Fifty years or more. And they had a deal, but they didn't have the city permit. They got one and they remembered, but she can't find it. Dad passed on it. His mother can't find it. He can't find it. City went out there and scared her death. She thought she was going to tear the thing down. And they said, "No, because it's kept up in decent condition. When you're keeping it up in structure." We understand that you have this, but the staff has done a great job of going out and identifying those inventorying and identifying those facilities that are like that. Think the intent of this, once again, we got to look at the intent of what our staff was trying to do is to get rid of the unsightly, unauthorized facilities that we have that are in violation of the deal. We know that.
But if, if I went in to get a permit and the city said I didn't have to have one?
I'm not saying that.
Well, but it says all carports.
I think that's a mistake. I think what it was-
I totally disagree. Maybe a mistake.
What it's intention to do was those that, those that did not have a permit or were illegal or, you know, the intent was that they were illegal. They were built and were clearly a violation. This future date would be way out in the future. You give people, it's kind of a realization. Plenty of time. Plenty of notice that they got-
What? Well, see, quite a few of these, when it comes up this way. These people, the properties changed three or four times and they go, "It was here when I bought it." Right. And, and I assume the city was out there- And, and I assume the city was out there doing their business too.
Right. We were leaning, again, the common sense approach is up here.
Right. Only problem, this one is that phrase right there, acceptable conditions, a little bit qualitative, staff has to make a judgment call on what's acceptable condition or not, so you can see or see blank about that.
I got the same issue. Well, our building code and you'll see the neighborhood maintenance code that we're gonna talk about, the fire code, I mean, what we're taking is the extremes, but, you know, if you have, throw some common sense into it where there's five generations that bought the house, accessory buildings, carports are forty, fifty plus years old, it's gonna be a pretty rough day when you knock on their door and say you gotta tear it down. So what we're talking about is buildings that have water damage that are leaning, you can push on, they're gonna fall down, they're.
Health and safety.
Health and safety backed up by our codes that we address commercial buildings or any other property, that's what we're talking about.
And you can stay relatively consistent.
May not look too good, but if it's structurally sound, we're not talking about that. We're talking about that are, we can, we can define that before you bring some, a little bit more wording about that. These were just kind of cliff notes, but that was our intent, was those that were imminent hazards.
Also, when you have an accepted condition, I don't know if anybody in the room would be this way, but there are people out that say, I don't like the color of that, that's unacceptable. And there's been council members that have said that in the past. They wanted to get rid of the color that they have on their buildings and.
Acceptable condition.
We can bring this back, but our intent was hazardous, that's not what that says, but if that's, if you're reading, we can bring that back and define that in our building and fire codes now that are in hazardous, imminent hazardous condition, what we're talking about.
Eric, can we talk a little bit more about this? Is this technically in addition to, kind of like an additional possible requirement? Because they don't need a setback building line in the future, wouldn't we be, wouldn't we be doing that anyhow? Wouldn't we be prohibiting carports from the corruption on setback for building line in the future?
I think this option was looking at our existing, our options of enforcement. Option three differs from this one, option three was we go out, if you don't have a permit or proof.
Talking about existing carports, I'm thinking more about future carports. For future carports, we would prohibit a carport if it didn't meet a setback building line, wouldn't we?
Right.
Right. Unless they got a variance.
I just wanna make that clarification.
It could get a variance if you put them in the G E L.
If you go back to the provisions, the requirement, especially rear building line, is that you are giving providing provisions to fight the, that is not the building setback line. This adds another layer of requirement, 'cause you're, so basically if you don't have enough room, then you prohibit it. So it is kind of a third option, a little more restrictive. Your current normally rear building line is twenty-five feet or twenty feet.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, in the options we're allowing five feet.
Okay.
So this basically lack of, this basically prohibits carports in many of our districts because we just, we don't have that large of lots.
Going forward.
Going forward, yes, going forward.
Going forward, not existing.
Not existing, this is going forward.
So it is kind of like an additional layer.
Right.
I don't like the distance. I understand what you're doing, trying to get around it, but it's gonna be slippery slope, especially with, you know, they wanna fix it up and replace what they have.
Don't you think about the new?
But I mean, they gotta tear it down 'cause it's too bad at that point, does it become new or can they rebuild it as, at that same location?
Anytime you rebuild, it's new.
See, and that's my problem with it, it's just that these folks have lived there. In all my street, we have all these sheds that are right up against the house, and if I have to move it out in the middle of the yard, that means I have to tear down a tree that I planted.
Where I was going with this is do you want to allow truly new structures out into the building setback? New carports, if they weren't there before, ever happened there before, do you want to allow those to go into the setback, twenty feet into the setback, basically?
I just think that we need to talk about the ones that are there and.
Well, that's what, yeah, it's kind of do both. Here we're talking about the ones that are there, here we're talking about some of the ones that are there and talking about future ones.
Unless you remember all, all of this, the intent and purpose of this, if we look at it, is for neighborhood revitalization. It's not, it's not to just continue with deterioration of existing properties, but it's how to, we come in and revitalize the neighborhoods and bring them to a higher standard, which in turn changes your demographic.
Well, I don't mind putting something on the books about the temporary tent shelters, you know, those ones that have the poles and the tarp over it or whatever. If someone needs to have one temporary for doing whatever, to either set up something for a party or work on a car for leave or whatever, but for having it there for six months and during the stormy weather and get blown up and stuff, that's where I have a problem with it. Again, I know that's where we're going here, but it's all a little thumb, how people look at stuff, I just don't like the distance.
Must admit, time will it all take for this seventy-two hours.
That's relative.
That's what's proposed.
Seventy-two hours.
Any more discussion? All right, now we'll move on to accessory buildings. These are detached buildings.
These words.
This one's really.
That are utilized for storage of equipment related to residential uses. And our current requirements are that they're located behind the front building line and five feet from the primary structure. Anything on a corner lot has to meet the size setback requirements. Permits are not required, once again, for accessory buildings that are under a hundred and twenty-one square feet. Anything over two hundred square feet has to match the exterior finished materials of a primary structure. You're allowed to do a residential component or a granny flat and an Old Town Design Review Committee review for structures requiring permits in Old Town.
Thousands of these, thousands, or at least a hundred, a hundred and twenty-one, probably thousands or at least a hundred and twenty-one, two, I think, I believe.
And.
In many cases, four, five, single backyard lots.
I was gonna say, I think there's like two, two of them that are like a hundred piece.
Yeah, a hundred piece, yeah. And it's not meeting the five feet, the initial component, yeah, 'cause they didn't require a permit.
So let's know what's out there today. I strongly encourage you to drive Valley Parkway, Savinane, Del Air, one twenty-one to Durr Ridge, Fox, one twenty-one, Durr Ridge, I thirty-five, Durr Ridge.
I thirty.
Edmonds.
Yeah, Edmonds.
Head come upside, you'll see it come.
Take a look at the backyards. Here, look, see what's there.
The history of this.
You don't have to go across the freeway, check their own site, right here.
Yep. Oh, yeah, I'm just, she just knows as examples.
The history of these is very similar. The history was very similar to these, the sixties.
Did I hit the button?
Yeah.
You hit the button.
Those are all nice. Those are nice.
We'll take any of them.
There was not much enforcement efforts in the seventies, eighties, prior to the hundred and twenty square foot ordinance, I don't think there was any, any regulation on a storage building. Back in the fifties and sixties, we'll remember Morgan Portable Buildings out on four oh seven in McGee, they manufactured portable buildings, they were one of the, one of the few that did it in the country. It's hard to get one 'cause they, they weren't as abundant, big old lows are home deep, wanna buy one. So a lot of the, the ones you see made out of corrugated metal, metal or some of the older ones made out of wood throughout Louisville and throughout every town in the metroplex, they evolved over ten, twenty, thirty years and over four or five generations of ownerships. We pleased inspectors did a spot check of just a couple of streets in the core of Louisville and we had people calling upset, they had, they were the fifth generation homeowner, been there for fifty years, forty years, then somebody had called the mayor about it and all we were doing was checking on a complaint on one, but we were looking at the others and the word got out that they, Big Mad Wolf, they come out and take the storage building away, so, which we explained it weren't. So there's a wide history of, I'd say non-enforcement, but non-regulation in our past, so this was our task, was to look at what was out there and the committee had juggled this as a topic. We have had people living in it, we've had fires in it, we've had all kinds of different activities. I would say that for the most part, most homeowners use it for residential storage commodities, which is a good thing, you get your gasoline, your propane, your extra bottles for grills, your flammable combustible materials, things that shouldn't be in the garage out there, that people don't wanna store.
I think ninety percent of the perceived problem here is the appearance of most of them. Some of them look nice, these aren't in town.
And we have regulated those.
Both look nice, but drive around, you'll see the ones that look something.
If we see one with an extension cord going to it and we've noticed people going in out of it, we will knock and see if they're using it as a living quarters, which you cannot do, we have the regulation to address that. Some pleased inspectors have already done that. We've had a few fires, after a fire, someone living in there, so we've addressed a few of those in time. I'm sure we don't have all of them, 'cause those are cat and mouse games, but that's basically the history of what's going on in that.
See, what you just said to that, but could you explain, elaborate a little bit on being able to see that and not being able to require that in the future, that's a problem.
It's a problem on enforcement. If we have an alley, a public way, or you can see it from the front street, but that's our limits of enforcement, unless a neighbor advises to the backyard, we can see it. But again, a lot of the activities that go on at night or on weekends, we're not there twenty-four, seven, so another enforcement challenge. Now, again, if, now I'd say this is extreme, 'cause we haven't had that many, there's a lot of perceived out there where they say eight people are sleeping in an accessory building. Well, that shows pretty quick, 'cause we can, we can see that. If we get a complaint and it's not permitted as such, we can regulate that. But the problem is seeing a behind tall fence, it's ten foot or eight foot fence, a lot of these are six foot tall, so that's another challenge. But we have had residents that complain, want us to come in their backyard and see it, and if it's a violation, we've addressed it. Doesn't mean that it, like weeds, that can grow back, and a lot of that does happen, that address it, but three months later, the problem is back, but we do have that ongoing now.
If you have a seven foot tall cul-de-sac.
We have one pretty gross.
It'd be risky, let's start playing better.
We should still.
So the Neighborhood Preservation Committee made several recommendations for accessory structures. First, they have, they should be located behind the front building line, no more than two per lot.
Easy to go, easy to do going forward, semi-easy to do going forward, real big problems for existing conditions.
No overhangs on adjacent property. The total of your accessory structures can exceed five hundred square feet, so if you have two, you can't go over that amount. And the aggregate square footage of both, of all your buildings will determine the exterior finished requirements.
If Eric, back up to, if, if on the complaints, we get complaints, those can be anonymous, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's in other words, 'cause people, I've had some people coming for it, I'm all about that, well, I don't wanna say you don't have it, I said, you don't have to, in fact, you can do it online, you can even file a complaint online, but then also, they can, it's where a lot of people, like you said, they're, it's your neighbor, it's an empty city commission, come in your backyard, climb up a ladder in your backyard if you want to, like them, so they can look into the neighbors back there.
Right? This? What's that world?
Well, we generally, we generally don't like the ladder, but if they have a.
But if they ask you to climb over and get a cat out of a tree.
A second floor, we've done that, but again, the anonymous part, we don't release the complaint's name. Neighbors, they figure out who, who did it, 'cause we parked in front of their house and they know that, but we don't, we don't release the name.
But you can also do it online.
They don't have like an other car, like police.
Earlier, something you mentioned, permitting statement that this is the first, fifth owner of this house, it was here when I bought it. Is there any recommendation from Preservation Board going forward that there could be something in there, and when the next owner comes up in possession of the property, changes can be made as far as these sheds?
Do they want to do see?
Yeah, do we get off on a.
Well, when a house, when a house sells, the city doesn't know, that's a transparent transaction, so there's not a lot of opportunity for us there. So we, we don't, I don't know that how we would link with, the question is, is there a chance to, for the city to intervene if homeowner A sells to homeowner B and have that be a, a trigger point for compliance? And I don't believe there is.
Do you have to have some kind of requirement that the real estate industry report to you? You say, I'm not sure. I mean.
Good luck with that.
We have some recommendations, I'll say that's not the way it works for commercial businesses. If Leroy's Shoes sells to Asia Shoes, then the legal not conforming can continue. There's no trigger point there on just ownership of sale in the commercial world, if nothing else has changed. We'll, we'll see some recommendations here that may help us when we get rid of.
What do you, what, what do you need to? I have one problem with this, and it's just, you know, it's me sitting in my shoes, looking at my, my own situation for a starter, but right now I could put three outbuildings on my, I have one, I have one that's twelve by twenty-four. I could put two more outbuildings on it, they'd be a hundred feet apart. I could have three of them, they'd be a hundred feet apart. The way this regulation is set up, it's not tied to the size of a lot, but at a hundred feet apart, my outbuildings are further apart than the density you would have if you had two per house in a typical neighborhood. So I feel like I'm kinda getting penalized here.
You'll see, when we get to, the NPC proposed something that relates to what your, what your district is, so your, the lot coverage does come into play with some of their recommendations. So a person with a larger lot would be able to have essentially larger accessory structures or more accessory structure, up to five hundred square feet before you get a variance. But on some of the smaller lots, especially some of the townhouse, so you would be probably restricted by your lot coverage based on one of the NPC recommendations.
And I was gonna say, it works the other way too, 'cause I don't wanna see doing these, you know, garden home backyard.
Right.
And the other thing is that your situation is very unique, it's not the norm.
I know it, I know it's not the norm.
So, you know, this would be different if you were in a city where majority of the lots were two acre lot, or you had a two acre lot. But so we are looking at the majority for the purpose of this ordinance, where we know your case, case like yours, anyone, your situation, what you're describing would be unique, that it would be, you may, you still have that extra layer of permit by coming to the city council, but it's a unique situation that would be permitted a different way. Versus eighty percent of our inventory out there that is smaller.
I'm just thinking about old age.
To continue on with the recommendations, they suggested that we eliminate the residential component, basically require any type of habitable structure to go through the building permit process, so it wasn't approved as an accessory structure.
Breaking that.
Remove the requirements from the zoning ordinance and have it in the general development ordinance so that variances can be requested. For example, if someone had a large lot and wanted a accessory structure larger than five hundred square, or if two buildings are proposed on the same lot and the total exceeds a hundred square feet, five foot separation is required from the main structure side of your accessory ordinance. And it's the recommendation.
They're limited or not, that's. Yeah, I mean, that's, my sheds been out there and I put it five feet away from house, it'll be there in the middle of the yard or have to remove a tree and it's kinda, it's been that way for thirty years, and it's about time for it to be replaced. I'm not, I don't wanna put it anywhere.
You'll see in the staff recommendations that we're coming up on, we've.
I'll have to replace it before we pass this.